We'll call the Hastings Planning Commission to order. Today's date is September 14th, 2015. This is a regular meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Slaton.
I'd like to see us move under other actions the house moving site before the public hearing on the taproom ordinance. I'm thinking we're going to spend quite a bit of time talking about that tonight.
So we have a motion to move Agenda Item 4 and replace it with Agenda Item 3. Do you have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second on that motion. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Alright, so we've moved that. Alright, so now we'll move on to approval of our minutes from way back on June 22nd. Any comments, clarifications? Seeing none, a motion to approve the minutes may be in order?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Alpa. All in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the minutes are approved. Alright, so since we've swapped those items now. Justin, if you can keep up with that audible there.
Yep.
We're to other actions, which would be bill auditing, which is a house move site, Plan Number 2015-32. Relocation of existing four-unit structure to 2975 Riverwood Drive. Mr. Portney.
Thank you very much. This proposal is for the lot shown on the aerial picture in front of you. You can see it's adjacent to three existing fourplex units. Behind it is a 36 unit apartment building. And across the street is a condo building. These are some photographs recently of the structure. It's right now at the applicant's land in Lakeville. They've been doing some work to it, as you can see. It was a fourplex unit that was purchased by somebody else and moved, and then the current applicant purchased it from them. It currently has new windows, new roof, front and rear fascia and soffits. It's proposed to get the following after it would be moved. New tan, commercial-grade vinyl siding. Fire suppression sprinkler system, which is required by code. New walkout foundation. Remodeled interior. New four-car garage in the rear. And seven trees on the lot. This is a site plan showing the location of the proposed structure. It meets all the required setbacks for the district. Seven feet from the side property line. And at least 20 feet from the front property line. It shows a driveway and parking area and garage in the rear of the property. It's proposed to look very similar to this existing fourplex, which is the first one on that block. It's two doors to the north of this lot. This was moved here in 1995 by the applicant. And he said it will look very similar to this structure. As far as compatibility goes for moving in a house, it's consistent with the construction type of the area. It's adjacent to three fourplexes, which have a similar design, age, and size. The previous valuation is not known because we weren't able to find out exactly what lot this came from. The applicant believes it was from Litchfield. But like I said, he didn't buy it and he didn't move it. I mean, he didn't buy it from the original lot, so he wasn't sure what the address was. Staff recommends approval based on those similarities. But staff can stand for any questions they might have.
Alright, thank you, Justin. Commissioners, we'll turn that over to you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Slaton.
I question whether the south is a fourplex. Having been out there and looked the area over, it looked more like a single family home. Is it indeed a fourplex?
Yeah, I believe it is a fourplex. I think the house to the south of that one is a single family.
The one to the south?
To the south of the fourplex. I could be wrong unless it's maybe been converted, but this structure here has four addresses attributed to it. And it's listed as an apartment building on the county's website. But that may have changed.
Okay, thank you. Looking at Alpa, the site is perfect for the size of what's proposed. This one might be a little drainage problem that's got to be looked at and perfected, but other than that, it looks like it'd be a good fit.
Sure, thanks. Adam?
Justin.
I have one thing to follow up with. We did get a call. We sent out notice within 350 feet. And an owner listed at 3050 Riverwood Drive, which I believe is in that condo association there. Martin Jurgensen. He said that they currently do have issues with renters in the area. He didn't specify where that came from, but there's several renters rental properties in that area. He said there's some issues with breaking and entering, taking of cans, and kids using the pool without permission at the condo building.
Okay. Thanks for passing that along.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments from the other commissioners?
I have one more.
Commissioner Slaton.
Justin, is everything on the east side rental, the apartments, versus condos on the west side?
Yeah, as far as I know. It's a 36 unit apartment building.
It is, it's an apartment though. Okay. And the one in the back, behind the large one, the 36, and the way back, that's all rental?
Yeah, that big, large building.
Everything on the west side is owner?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alpa.
Just for clarification, Justin, this is going to be sitting on a walkout foundation. Is that correct? Is the walkout going to face Riverwood or the other direction?
The walkout's going to face the rear. And there's going to be a separate entrance in the rear there, so they would walk out the back of their building to get to their parking area.
They'll be walking out the basement, basically, to get to the garage area.
Correct. I believe in the front, it's going to be a half level, similar to how that other one was on the corner. You'd go up to go upstairs or down to go downstairs.
Didn't look like that from the picture, but... Looked like it was more of a Rambler style.
Yeah, it kind of looks like that because since they took it off the foundation. But it isn't.
Okay.
I believe it's very similar to this. That whole front was cut up into here. Because this is the foundation kind of coming through there.
So there is going to be some slope to that driveway then going back there down to the garages, I take it?
Yeah, I believe it would have to, half a story.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? If there are none, a motion may be in order? Is the applicant here wish to speak on anything regarding this one? Or the applicant is here? No?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dever.
I will make a motion to approve the site plan for 2975 Riverwood Drive.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Wallace. Do we have any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That motion carries. Alright. Now we'll move on to Ordinance Amendment Number 2015-33. This is allowance of brewery taprooms, brew pubs, micro distilleries, and cocktail rooms in certain commercial and industrial districts. Mr. Portney.
Thank you. I'd like to first say this can be a little confusing, and I hope it's not my fault, but it might be related to state licensing for liquor establishments. It can get kind of confusing.
How hard to hear you up here?
Okay, I'll try to speak up in the microphone. So the reason why we're bringing this forward at this time is there's been a couple of inquiries in the past, couple, maybe three years, people asking if this kind of use is allowed here. And we've told them it's currently not, but if, you know, they have a proposal, we'd be willing to look at an ordinance amendment. And none of those had materialized. Also, this use is becoming kind of popular in the region and state. And there's been some enabling legislation in the past couple of years that have made it more lucrative to people that are looking to be in this type of field. And a taproom will most likely be part of the Hudson redevelopment project proposal. So generally, three uses we're looking at would be allowed under this change of ordinance. First would be a brew pub. The second would be a brewery with a taproom. And the second would be a micro, third would be a micro distillery with the possibility of a cocktail house, which is similar kind of to a taproom. And I'll go through each of these now. The first being a brew pub. Most of these requirements I'm mentioning are based on state statutes, but it must be a full restaurant. They would make their own beer for themselves and for any other establishment that they own. They may sell other types and brands of alcohol with the appropriate licensure. They are located in commercial districts. And off sale, which is of course the sale to take with you, not to consume on the property, must be in growlers, which is a refillable 64-ounce jug. Normally it's glass, like the one pictured. Some examples of brew pubs would be, the most well-known is Granite City Food and Brewery. They have several locations in the metro area. Eagan, Maple Grove, Roseville, St. Cloud, and St. Louis Park. As you can see from the picture, it looks like pretty much any restaurant with alcohol sales. This is just in our picture of the seating. They like to obviously, you know, incorporate some of their limited manufacturing into their facility. Another one is Barley John's Brew Pub in New Brighton. And the second one would be a brewery taproom. These are first and foremost generally a brewery. They may have a taproom for on and off sale of beer they make. They're not allowed to sell other kinds of alcohol. Off sale must be in growlers, and they're usually located in industrial districts. There are some business models that are similar to that, but with a stronger focus on retail sales. We kind of refer to those as micro brewery taprooms. They would seek to locate in commercial districts and would generally fit well with those districts. These are some examples of a standard brewery taproom. A lot of times they're located, like I said before, they're mostly in industrial areas. A lot of times their buildings are utilitarian in nature. And their taprooms vary in size. This one pictured here is pretty large. A lot of them are very small. Sometimes it's actually just kind of incorporated into the brewing area. The breweries are generally run, you know, five days a week, Monday through Friday. And a lot of times their taprooms are open maybe Thursday, Friday, Saturday, sometimes Sunday, for limited hours. This is one in Stillwater. And this is one in River Falls, near Industrial Park. This is in Lionel Lakes. It's an industrial zoning district. And this is in Hudson. They recently closed their taproom, so now they're just a brewing operation. And the following, I think, three examples I have are kind of what we would consider a micro brewery taproom. These have a strong focus towards the retail side of things. And in some of these situations, like this one in Excelsior, they require that they have 50% of their floor area for retail sales for onsite sale or for off sale. This is one in Hopkins. And this is one in White Bear Lake. And the final, the third type would be a micro distillery, which would obviously make their own spirits. They can provide free tastings up to 45 milliliters per person per day. They can't sell any alcohol on sale. And their off sale is limited to one small bottle per person per day. They're usually located in industrial districts. And they may be accompanied by a cocktail room. The state legislature recently passed that, and starting this past summer, that was allowed as long as municipality would also allow it. Which would allow for the retail sales at the micro distillery of what they produce, either adjacent to the site or incorporated into the site. And these are usually located in more commercial districts. This is a micro distillery in New Richmond, Wisconsin. This is one in Brooklyn Park. This one's from Duluth. And this one is in Minneapolis. There's several in Minneapolis. I didn't highlight them all, but I did this one because this was the first one in the state to take advantage of the cocktail room. And they opened that, I believe, this June or July. And then finally, this example's from Maconia. This is a new facility that they opened up that also has a cocktail room. If you can tell, it used to be a car dealership. They did extensive renovation to it. So this proposal would allow brewery taprooms in industrial one zoning districts. In that district, they wouldn't have to have a taproom. In the industrial park currently, just generally the manufacturing of pretty much anything is an allowable use, so that's kind of in line with kind of how it would operate now. They could have a taproom. And it would allow micro distilleries in the I-1 zoning district without on-sale of the spirits. But they would still be allowed to have tours, tastings, and the small bottle sales. And finally, the allowing of brew pubs, micro brewery taprooms, and micro distilleries with cocktail rooms would be allowed in commercial districts with a special use permit. And as you know, those are required to go before the planning commission and city council individually. And the reason for that is the mixed nature of those businesses. We want to make sure that the retail side of things works well with the area, along with some of the more brewery-type operations. Make sure that there's a way for the trucks to get in and out without causing any issues. And also make sure that the waste is handled properly. They do have some spent grains and stuff that they might have. We want to make sure that those are handled properly, not just sitting outside. So on the zoning map, you can see that the commercial areas where brew pubs, micro distilleries with the cocktail rooms, and the micro breweries with the taprooms, they would be allowed a special use permit in all the areas that are colored light pink, dark pink, red, maroon, and purple. So downtown, the Hudson building is purple. That's downtown core. That's kind of on both sides of the downtown. And Vermillion Street is mostly C3 commercial. And then the area down by Coburn's, those colors, pink and maroon. And then out at 55, it's mostly maroon with a little bit of pink. And it wouldn't include the purple, which is office. I understand that's kind of hard to see. And then I-1 industrial zoning district is this light gray color here. It's mostly the industrial park. And there's some other areas scattered around, but they're mostly developed or floodplain. So specifically for the proposed ordinance change, there's going to be some definitions added to the definitions, Chapter 15502, kind of as I described before. Brew pub, brewery taproom, and micro brewery taproom. In that description, this is the area for the commercial, more commercial use of a micro brewery taproom, which would be allowed by special use permit in commercial areas. And to be consistent with the retail nature of those districts, we'd want to require maximum size of the facility. We originally were looking at 5,000 square feet total with a 20% area for the retail sales. We just kind of went with the 5,000 because that was what one of the other cities, I think it was White Bear Lake, kind of went with. But looking at some of the buildings that we think people might use for this, some of them were a little bit bigger than 5,000 square feet. Also, we talked to Pat Regan with City Properties, who's looking at redeveloping the Hudson building. And they were looking at a part of their building that would be devoted to this would be a little bit larger than 5,000 square feet. It would be about 4,000 square feet for the production and bottling section. And then the retail portion would be about 2,000. And so we think, and we talked to them about this, and they thought it would work for their proposal, but we also are comfortable with the 5,000 square feet being for production and distribution as a maximum. And then 20% of whatever they have for production and distribution has to be used for retail sales. And the general purpose for this is just to make sure that it doesn't, they don't turn into a manufacturing facility in our commercial districts and kind of shut off from the retail nature of the areas. And micro distillery would have a cocktail room with the same stipulations. 5,000 square feet for the production and distribution area of their facility with 20% for retail sales. So the district changes that we would have would be for districts C1, 2, 3, and 4, and the downtown core zoning districts. We would allow by special use permit brew pubs, micro brewery taproom, and micro distillery with the cocktail room. And so for the number six and seven, you know, they couldn't have just the micro brewery or just the distillery. They'd also have to have the retail sales portion incorporated into it. And finally, the I-1 district would be, have a use, uses permit would be a brewery taproom and a micro distillery with no cocktail room being an option for that in the industrial park. In addition to the zoning ordinance changes that we're talking about tonight, the city clerk would be bringing forward proposals to the city council for liquor license classifications that might have some restrictions beyond what the state statutes have and set fees for those licensures. And no comments have been received by staff yet. So with that, we can turn it over to you to open a public hearing, and staff can answer any questions you may have.
Alright, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak, please step up to the podium, give your name and address, and give us your testimony. Any takers? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And we'll turn it over to the planning commission now. Commissioners. Commissioner Wallace.
Yes, sir. My packet, just a point of, just a question for you. I don't have a proposal in my packet. If this, I saw a proposal come up on here. In fact, I see a proposed changes, but I don't have a proposal in my packet. And some of the values you gave were different than my packet by way of definitions. Like my packet doesn't say growler anywhere in it, that that's restricted to how it's a sold-off sale or anything. So I just, maybe I got an outdated packet.
Okay. Yeah, a lot of the details I went over in the presentation are state statute requirements.
Okay.
And we wouldn't necessarily be putting those into our ordinance. And one of the big reasons for that is this ordinance has, the state statutes related to this have changed multiple times over the past couple of years. And so it'd take a lot to keep our ordinance up to date. So in our liquor license, we might have some of them, or we might just refer to the state statutes.
Okay.
But I apologize if there is some stuff in your packet missing for the definitions.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't see a proposal anywhere in there. I didn't know if this was just for a public hearing or if we were actually...
So you're looking for a draft amendment as well?
I was just wondering if there was a proposal or what we were doing, so...
All the amendments would be on the page that are listed as draft amendment. In the presentation, I had a proposal. That was just kind of a general overview of it, so I didn't get too bogged down in some of the details.
No problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Slaton.
I recommend that the Hudson building would be a good use here. And it would, having worked there many centuries ago. But I question, what is the square foot of the Hudson building? And if you're talking business, square footage versus building square footage for this use? Because if we're going to have apartments or condos in the building, which has been talked about, then this would not be a good fit for that building. But if they're not going to be housing in that building, it'd be a perfect spot.
Sure. The building itself, I don't have the square footage. I don't know if any of you remember it from what John has been talking about. It's pretty large, maybe 50, 60,000. Their proposal is going to be, and they are proposing to have rental units in there. They're also proposing on this side of the building, which would be the east side of the building, to have maybe one or two restaurants in there, banquet space. And this would be separated from the residential by a different wing altogether. And the proposal they're looking at is having the manufacturing part of this be in the basement, which they really don't have any other uses for. And then maybe opening up the floor above that and having the retail portion up above that and having, be able to look down and see a lot of the manufacturing aspects of it down below. So I don't know exactly what type of separation there is going to be there, but I think it's going to be pretty good, so there wouldn't be any issues with noise or operations in there.
Kind of made to differ on that statement because as old as that building is and everything, it attenuates up noise. I wouldn't want to be there with a brewery with trucks coming and going all the time, which we would have at that point in time. But that's me. And if we're saying 5,000 square feet in there, maybe 1,7500 square feet, then we're going to have to come in for a variance.
Yeah, I mean...
So maybe we want to list at 5,000, at 7,500 right away.
Sure. I did talk it over with Pat Regan, and he was fine with it being at 5,000. They're proposing at about 4,000 for manufacturing part of things. And again, that would be for the, whatever space is being used for that, or leased for that. It wouldn't be the whole building itself.
Thank you. I think at this time, I would, before I start speaking, because Pat Regan's name has been thrown out. He's also owner of Minnesota Coaches, of which I'm employed, so I just want to throw that out there as a full disclosure statement. At this time, I don't see a conflict of interest for me, so I'll continue to participate in any, unless anybody has a great objection to that. What I'm wondering, Justin, is, so the state statute, the liquor laws are what define what is a brew pub, what is a brewery taproom, what is a micro brewery taproom? They define that? The state statutes do?
They define all those. They don't have a definition for a micro brewery taproom, but they do define a brewery taproom. And we are able to put on, we can put extra requirements and stipulations on those. And so what we've done is just stated that you can do a brewery taproom in a commercial area, but you have to have a portion that's limited to make sure you have sales and a maximum size.
Because in the draft amendment, I'm, and I've, with everything we've ever dealt with, I've always been a proponent of let's, you know, the entrepreneur that wants to get started and grow and potentially grow their business in Hastings, we want to help to foster that. We've got a lot of locations to do that in town. To me, some of the language is a little bit ambiguous in the micro brewery taproom. A small-scale brewery owned by the brewer. Does that mean, one, does that mean, I'm seeing that language through here all the time, does that mean the brewmaster on site has to be an owner of the brewery? So you couldn't have an investor come in and, let's say, they want to start out with a brewery and they hire a brewmaster? So that's where I think, need a little clarification. I also don't like a small scale because now we're, then we would be in the business of defining, you know, perhaps we're giving them an award because they're no longer a small scale. They've made it now in their successful brewery. I just would like, if we're going to go down that road of defining a difference between a brewery and a micro brewery, for what we're talking about, I think we want to quantify that a little bit.
Sure. When it says a small-scale brewery, I don't think it was meant to be... When it says a small-scale brewery, I don't think it was meant to be a subjective statement that we would use to say, to review a proposal and say, you're not a small scale. We're just trying to show the general difference between a micro brewery taproom and a regular brewery taproom. The actual difference would come down to the square footage allowed, which is limiting the size. But it would be just as, just as good if we took out that. And then brewer isn't, I guess, referring specifically to the person that's brewing it. It's just represent, referencing the owner, the entity that's, that's the brewer.
Okay. So I kind of come to, it really comes down to whatever zone this particular brewery might be in, whatever zoning district it might be in. And, you know, again, I come back to typically you're going to find businesses especially of this nature is once they start putting too much pressure on the surrounding area, that's generally when, you know, when they start butting heads with the neighbors or the city or whatever, that's when they decide, okay, it's time to look for, you know, let's move out to the industrial district or, you know, or maybe they, you'd hope not, but maybe they pick up shop and go somewhere else. But I just want to make sure that we're not leaving anything ambiguous for, to be sorted out by future generations.
Mr. Chairman.
I had a...
General question about liquor licenses, I guess. Am I under the assumption there's a limit on the number of liquor license this, the city hands out? I was curious what that number was and how many are currently in use?
I don't know exactly, but I was talking to the, the city clerk and she said that, you know, there is a limit, but we're pretty far away from it. I'm sorry, I don't have any figures for you.
Based on population, the figures?
Yeah, maybe it's population, probably, or it could be size, I'm not sure. Square, square miles, I'm not sure.
Just point of clarification, we just, I actually just went through this. If you own a brewery, you're technically a brewer. It doesn't denote your job, that the brewery is owned. Whereas a brewmaster is a specific position. So this would conflict if an investor owned it, they would legally...
Commissioner Alpha.
Just for a point of clarification, there is no limit to the amount of beer that can be made in the micro brewery as, just as there is in the micro distillery, is that correct? It's strictly based on the size of the building itself. That determines the difference between a micro brewery and a brew.
Correct, from our ordinance standpoint, sure. There are some, some, some limits that the state statutes have. And there's different, different amounts depending on how much they plan on doing. The licenses are a lot more money for the more they want, for the, for the production as it goes up, so does the fee. But we didn't have that in here. And the biggest reason for that is those are really hard things for us to track. We don't know how many, how many gallons somebody is doing. It's a lot easier to determine, you know, how much of, how big of a facility they have. And then that might be more, I think closely related to the impact it's going to have on the area.
Don't you have that same issue with distillery then too? Determining how much they've made as well?
Correct. I guess the only reason that one is in there is because that's from the state statutes and that's the only limit that they have is 40,000. Whereas with the, with the brewery taproom, they have several different limits. And so I guess it just, it wasn't included because it can be kind of confusing. And really to stick with our proposal and not get too invested in the amount of, in the regulations of the state statute, it probably would be best to take out 40,000 proof gallons, especially if they wanted to change those again next year like they have done a couple of times.
Just set it up to, to follow the state guidelines under the state statutes. My only concern or question, the reason I'm questioning that is, and I'm not a brewmaster, so I have no idea. But if they start becoming more and more successful, if they're going to try to continue to pump out more and more and what the stress that could put on the, the building itself or that area and any neighbors that might be there if they're trying to do too much to try to remain in that micro as opposed to now, okay, now we have to move to a brewery in the industrial park.
Yeah. What I have found with some of the reading I've done and some of the taproom owners I've talked to is when they get to a certain point where they've maximized their output, it's usually with, you know, response, I mean, is a, how much equipment they have, the size of their equipment. They can only produce so much because it has to sit so long. Rather than, you know, getting rid of those and getting new ones, which can cost a lot more money, they usually would open up a secondary place where they would just manufacture or they would, I guess, contract with another, with another brewery that's already established that has production capacity to do some of their, their brewing for them, for their main production.
Well, I do know once you go from that craft brew business model, it, it changes quite a bit when you try to scale up and, and, you know, I think you look at like the, you know, like the Sam Adams or the Dogfish Head, those, those labels, they're in that generation. They're in that, that category where they're really turning into breweries. And it's, it's gone big scale. And they got a lot of trucks in and out and it's just not conducive for, it's not conducive for that craft, you know, experience. Where you're going into a downtown or you're going into a small commercial space and, you know. So I do get, I do see that, that difference, you know, that the business model changes, you know.
Correct. But it's that transition that can be a little tricky.
Yeah, like it's... So Justin, just for clarification on the micro distillery, the language would then read something to the effect of, "A distillery which produces premium distilled spirits in total quantity not exceeding state statutes," or however that's, and it would just fall back to that, to the state's requirement?
Yeah, I believe that'd be a good idea.
And you said the 5,000 square feet, square feet area, that is, that was taken from another, from another city, from Wyper, like you said, that was from theirs? Did you see any other cities referencing that that had this, these type of ordinance?
I, I thought there was one more, but I can't say for sure. I might be confusing myself. I think that other one that I was thinking of might be, it does require half of it being for retail. But that's a good, good point. I would want to make sure that we would be clarifying that. It would be 5,000 square feet for production and distribution area.
Is there room for, just thinking, we've got some bigger spaces in town that are, that are vacant or would be conducive to this type of thing. Is there room for variance with that, within this? Would, would, I'm just, what I don't want to happen is all of a sudden we've got the next big thing coming to town and our ordinance is what limits us from, from getting, you know...
I'd hate to see us have to come back for the variance. That's why I'd go with 75 versus 5,000.
Yeah. We can do that.
And we just create more conflict.
Yeah. And that's where, you know, I think the, the scientific method to that would be to say, you know, who is that average brewer and what equipment, you know, do you need to be at that scale? And what kind of square footage does that take up? So that's where, yeah, we took ours from, from somebody else, but where did they get there? You know, where did they come up with that 5,000 square foot rule?
We, we did see that as an example and we did look around at all the buildings, you know, that we could think of that, you know, somebody might do this in. Like we looked at the, the old bank building that's now the Art, it's across the street here. I think that building was like 70, 800 square feet. And that's a pretty big building for one of these. You normally don't see a lot of these craft taprooms in a building that big. And if you figure 5,000 square feet for production and then 20% of that for retail space, you know, that would, yeah, that maybe not, maybe we wouldn't allow that building. But anything smaller than that, it would. So, I mean, if we did bump that up, you know, that's an example of a sized building that would be allowed in. Of course, it could always go in there with another, you know, tenant in there too. But I'm just thinking of an example for a, for a full building size.
I've been in the Granite City and Eagan many times. I want to say that, excuse me, that that building approaches 12,000 square feet over there. And at least half of it or more would be seating area. It's got a pretty good size bar and it's on the brunch and does a good business over there during the day. So if you were going to go 50%, you're looking at, well, at least 6,000 there if it was half and half. But, so I don't know. Maybe we need to make some calls around and see what their square footage of their buildings are versus what we're looking at here.
Yeah, well, we did look at several of them and, and they were generally under 5,000 square feet. For the ones that we were looking at, the kind of, for this area, the kind of commercial ones. And then some of the ones that were in industrial parks were, were also smaller. And then, of course, obviously there were some that were bigger, but those were all, none of the retail ones were bigger. But there's only, you know, a few of them around. They're not all over like pharmacies.
So if we, if we were to say, okay, a micro brewery taproom, but they're in the industrial park, we aren't really going to care what the square footage is on that, right? That becomes a brewery taproom.
Yeah, if they're in the industrial park, then there'd be a brewery taproom and they wouldn't have any restrictions on size.
I, to me, I struggle with putting, putting a square foot. I understand that, you know, that's, that's how you, that's the quantitative value to, to regulate that. I'd just like to fall back on entrepreneurial creativity. You know, if, if someone could somehow sneak something into a building that's 10,000 square feet and, and still fall within this and make something great. Now, do we have a building like that around? I don't, I don't know that we do necessarily. Other commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wallace.
Just a question of clarification. We have five definitions on the front page. And then for 15530, 15531, makes allowances for a micro distillery with cocktail room as opposed to a micro brewery taproom. Is that simply a combination of the micro distillery and the cocktail room? The reason I ask is because it seems the difference would be small scale versus a distillery and a micro distillery may have trucking distribution. And that would put that in downtown. Why I'm asking for clarification.
Well, a micro distillery would not be able to go in any commercial district unless it also had a cocktail room. And also in those cases, it would have to be under the 5,000 square foot for the production side of things. And it would have to maintain that cocktail room. It couldn't just be production.
Well, except it doesn't say that, okay, if that's, if that's what we're talking about today, that's great. But there wasn't a definition for a micro distillery with cocktail room.
Correct.
And if they're just simply combining the two, there's no restriction other than the 40,000 gallons we talked about earlier for a distillery versus a brewery.
There is with the cocktail room though.
I understand that, but it's, if this isn't specified for a cocktail room.
Sure. I guess that limitation for that size is connected to the cocktail room rather than the micro distillery. And since they both have to be together in a commercial area, their requirements would be binding them together.
Well, then I fail to see the difference between the two, between a micro brewery taproom versus a micro distillery with cocktail room.
Well, yeah, there's not much difference. The only difference would be one's making spirits and one's making brew beer. I try, we try to keep them as close to, together as possible, so it's not confusing. So essentially they are the same. The only difference, of course, like I said, is what they're making.
Justin, did you find that the, the distilleries are a little more particular about where they locate than breweries?
Well, they really have been in the past because Minnesota didn't allow them to, to sell on sale and, and off sale. So basically what you do is you'd go in there, get a tour, have a taste, and they give you a map where to find their products for sale. So that's why they have, you haven't seen them here. And that's why they built that one in, in Wisconsin across the border. In 2015, this past year, they made the change. You could sell the smaller bottle, the 350 milliliter. And you can have a cocktail room similar to a tap, tap room on the site. So just in the past several months, I think there's been like, you know, two or three that have, that have popped up because of that. Because before it really wasn't, you know, a great business, a business model.
Are those in your typical commercial type of district or are they...
It's kind of similar to, I guess, how they do the taprooms. They kind of look, not a lot of new construction. They look for buildings that would be repurposed well for their needs. They, they would do like the visibility now that they can sell to consumers. But in the past, of course, they, since they couldn't sell to consumers, they basically were just manufacturing. They were kind of limited to industrial spaces, but now that's changing more to commercial.
Mr. Chairman, what's our intended course of action on this tonight? Is this just our first reading or how does that work?
I think staff would, uh, staff, or Justin, you correct me if I'm wrong, but you presented this with the expectation that this could potentially be approved as it sits to city council. But obviously with these things, we know there may be several iterations of...
Sure. The other, the Planning Commission has the authority to, to vote tonight to make a recommendation to city council on this. Or if they would like, they can, they can table it and give staff direction on, on other information or anything in between.
And I think if we do want to vote, we've talked about some things that we may want to change. I think we want to make sure that we have clear communication as to what those are, seeing as we don't have them written down in front of us. Mr. Slate.
I'd like to see us table this and bring it back for one more discussion with the proposed changes.
That was a motion.
Well, that's open for discussion before we make a motion.
Okay. So if we did that, you know, we'd be looking for that change. And then I think staff was very thorough on this. You know, obviously we can have staff pester some of these small businesses some more about how big their buildings are and what their, what their equipment is. But I think we're kind of getting the general sense from Justin that, you know, we're, we're in the ballpark as far as what we're talking about here. If we were to table, would the commission like to see anything else from staff?
What about, excuse me, Mr. Chair, what about some more examples of sizes from other communities who have adopted this, this type of language? Just as, for some more examples.
I think that would be good.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson.
In line with that, should we look at some other language from other cities?
One thing we found when researching these other cities' languages is almost all the cities that did pass one of these, it was in response to somebody knocking at their door. And all their examples we found of their language was very specific to just one of these uses in one zoning district. And beyond that, they were all outdated because the state statutes changed in 2014 and 2015. So I think there's only one that is up to date. And they are just, I think it was Eagan, and they were real specific just for one, one location.
So we, Hastings may have the first sort of broad umbrella set of language.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Okay, so we really don't have anything to compare it with.
Right.
Okay.
And to that end, I, we know that there's potential in, in the redevelopment of the Hudson Building. I like the approach we're taking though, is that we're getting ahead of the game and we're... And like Justin was saying, let's not be specific to one thing. If we're going to do it, let's spend the time and let's do it for, do it for everything. You know, let's, let's visit it now, let's spend the time it needs on it and then do it right.
I will read and make my statement into a motion. And we table this for further discussion at the next meeting with a few answers. Justin will do a little bit more homework here and present the actions on the panel.
All right, we have a motion to table this for staff's clarifications and corrections. And do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Alpa. All those in favor signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. All right, we will table that. And Justin, that will go to, what would that be, the twenty, twenty-eight?
That's correct. And I should have stated earlier, the House move would go to city council on the twenty-first, next Monday.
And so then, when that comes back before us, that will not be another public hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can we just send ideas and suggestions we have to Justin?
Yeah, if anybody, if you have things you'd like, or any, I'm sure you took good notes on that, but anything, any other clarification that anybody wants or thinks of between now and then, please continue that discussion. All right, that would bring us to other business.
There's not a lot of city council updates from planning commission meetings. But we do have a meeting coming up on September twenty-eighth, planning commission meeting. And on that, we will be reviewing the site plan for Hudson Redevelopment Project along with preliminary and final plat for it. And we will be looking at an ordinance amendment to the downtown core zoning district. Looking at another change, we recently made a change to that district to allow for residential on the first floor east of downtown. Now we're looking at doing that west of downtown because of the Hudson Redevelopment Project. It doesn't allow downtown core to have residential on the first floor west of the bridge. So we, we're looking at bringing that forward to change that. And additionally, we'll have the tap room and similar uses ordinance to come back before you.
All right, thank you, Justin, and thank you to you and city staff for all the work you've done on the, the ordinance amendment there. I think that you're very good in, in advance. Thank you for, for what you'll be doing for us. Any other business from other commissioners?
Not of another nature. Justin, if you pass on to the Parks Department. Shared Park Pondy Basin on the south end is loaded with loose strife. It needs to be pulled out before it spreads anymore. I took several pictures a couple of weeks ago. I run my dog down there every day.
All right, I'll pass that along to them.
I have two very good pictures.
Yeah, I can see it from here.
Before, it's already turned colors from this, what you see, to brown, so it will be harder to detect. But there's lots of it.
If there's no other business, I think a motion to adjourn may be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Dever for adjournment. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. We are adjourned.